Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, August 15th. My name is Scott Bugby. To my left is Jim Leehan. To Jim's left is Jack Hathaway, our Town Administrator, and Marion Harrington, our Executive Assistant. Our colleague Jeff Plumb will not be joining us tonight. A reminder, this meeting is being audio and videotaped, consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be rebroadcast on NCTV's government channel and uploaded online to YouTube. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jack, can you read our abbreviated, or agenda?
Super abbreviated agenda. I think we have a release of warrants. We have action items, which I think we're actually gonna postpone most of those. We're gonna consider goals and liaisons. We have a quorum policy, and I do need to delay that, because Mr. Bragman wasn't available tonight. And then, please consider taking action on the new marijuana line signed by the Governor. We need to change that a little bit, too, because the House bill, the House bill was gonna give us some action, but the final bill that was approved by the Governor does not allow the Selectmen to take action, so we'll take action at town meeting, but we can discuss that. And then, discussion item, the grant for the Lawrence Street Bridge that we talked about last week.
Inacceptable minutes, but I don't know if we can do that without Mr. Plumb either?
Well, actually, I took the minutes and I reviewed them and crossed Jeff's name out and signed mine, if that's agreeable with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, we can do that, okay.
So I would move to accept the minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a lot of order. Okay, on the warrants, I can attest that I reviewed and signed those warrants, too. And goals and liaisons, as Jack mentioned, without Jeff here, we're gonna just, we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting, it's fine. I mean, we have, I mean, there's no sense, I think, to do it. Obviously, the new quorum policy, I'd rather have Scott here to just let us know what was, because we weren't really understanding what was changing, right, or exactly what was in there.
I'd rather have him speak to it.
That's fine.
Say that again?
The quorum policy, remember, he had something in Scott, you know, there was a long thing, but there's only a minor change. I think it's, I think it's all for the good, right, but I don't know. Alright, so the new marijuana thing, Jack, I saw your, I saw your email.
So this has to do with the town's ability to license and retailers to be able to sell retail marijuana in town. And since legislation was just adopted and signed by the Governor, that allows towns to take action on how they wanna control that. So we can, my understanding, after talking to the Town Council and reading through the MMA, you know, write-ups on this, the House bill was gonna allow the Selectmen to take a vote to, to just ban marijuana, retail marijuana sales. The final bill that went, you know, after went through negotiations with the Senate and was ultimately signed by the Governor, did not have that ability in there. But it does allow towns to create a bylaw, towns that were, like us, that actually defeated, locally defeated question four, which is the sale of marijuana, we have the ability to just go and have a bylaw passed that, both in the, there's a portion that'll be in the general bylaws, and a portion that will be in the zoning bylaws. And we can either limit it to one, down to one-fifth of our alcohol sales, which would be, so we have five stores, so we'd be able to have one retail store if we wanted to. We can outright ban it, or obviously, we can, we could allow it.
Okay.
What the, just, you know, for, just so you know, the towns that did not ban, vote locally to ban marijuana, they have to go back to the ballot, so they'd have to have a ballot question. So, we, since we voted no, we don't have to do that.
So it's just town meeting? It will be town meeting, so it'll be, there'll be a general bylaw and a zoning bylaw, okay. Do we need to do anything tonight then to do that, or no? Because we need to see the, okay.
And Town Council, Town Council said it's, it's still, you know, they're still working, all the Town Councils are working with the Attorney General. The Attorney General had a conference call yesterday and released some information. They believe they have some drafts of, you know, standardized zoning bylaws that would be acceptable, and they'll share with that. And I think there's probably still gonna be some more discussion about those up until beginning of September, when our warrant closes, so.
Okay.
Dave, and Dave said he'd get that to us.
When does the warrant close?
Right after Labor Day, 7th.
Which is before our next meeting? Which is before our next meeting? So, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah, yeah, entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we request Town Council to prepare the appropriate articles for the November town meeting to ban the sale of recreation marijuana in Norfolk.
Second. Discussion? No, I mean, so we don't have a meeting, I mean, again, our town was against it, I know...
It was the will of the town, and let the town decide.
I'll do, too, and I know Jeff's been on record against it anyways, so I'm fine with that. Any other, Jack?
No.
Vote?
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye, okay. So that we're calm, that we're done, right, so, okay, that will go on, okay, because we don't meet again before that?
I just wanna be sure we get it on the, on the agenda.
On the ballot, I mean.
I mean, on the town warrant.
On the town warrant.
Let people decide, I mean, if they wanna change their mind.
That's, that's their privilege, yeah.
And they could also, it could be amended on the floor as well, right, if someone wanted to go to the one-fifth rule, Jack, or allow it to, I mean, get friendly, you know?
Yeah, well, assuming it's, assuming the moderator deemed it to be within scope of the warrant article, but.
Okay.
Normally, that would be allowed.
Perfect. Alright, we've got a lot more to cover, so I don't wanna slow us down.
We have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, jeez. 16, we've, how many more people here? I believe it's 32 sets of executive session minutes that, I've read through them, and...
Yeah, I just skimmed them.
And you've signed them in the past, saying that they're correct.
They are what they are, yeah.
At this point, we can release them if you're willing. We've had a, we've had a public records quest for some executive sessions, including these, these sets, so we'll put these, once we release them, we'll put them out on the website, and people can have at them.
I'm fine with motion, if you want, someone wants to make a motion?
These have all been cleansed by Council, that we don't have any open legal considerations?
These have been cleansed by me. I have not, not reviewed these, but I've, I've taken out, you know, other than one set in the beginning that just talks about, just makes the statement that we still have open litigation with Lake Street. It doesn't actually talk about the facts of the case, it just makes that one statement. I've gone through and believe that we don't have any other open litigation on these, in these sets of minutes.
Okay.
So we have another set of probably 20 minutes that go back to 2011, between 2011 and now, that still have active, they're either active litigation, so we should not release those at this point. And then, there were some personnel matters that I was gonna review with Town Council, just to make sure that, because there's some, there's some...
Sensitive, I mean, personnel...
Very sensitive information in there, and frankly, I'm not sure, I wanna have him review whether or not we should release those, or I suspect we may be able to keep those, or either redact them or release them.
I, I, yeah, I have it, too, yeah, that's fine, I can't be wrong.
Do you need a motion to release, or just release?
I would have a motion to release.
I move to release.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So all the town clerk, put those on the town's website.
Thanks, Jack. Okay. Lawrence Street Bridge?
So, you know, there's a, for the past about five years, we've been having discussions with the State Department of Transportation about bridge inspections. We've had reviews, three different reviews of Lawrence Street Bridge, as well as the City Mills Bridge. We've applied for grants in both situations, the small bridge grants for $500,000. We actually received a, some money, well, we received, we were earmarked with some funds through a transportation bill, but that, that funding never, that got, NC cut. So, through the Small Work Grant, which is a program that is tied into development, requires nearby development to be occurring that has four units per acre, which is what is being proposed by the Apple, Abbey, Abbeyville, sorry, Abbeyville Project. We have the ability to apply for a grant through the state for up to two and a half million. So we've applied for a grant of about $1.8 million, which includes rebuilding the bridge at Lawrence Street, putting in roadway, redoing the Lawrence Street pavement, putting in sidewalks along Lawrence Street.
The whole, all, all within our, you know, Lawrence Street up to Mill Street, the whole way?
From, yeah.
You know, from Park, all the way up to wherever it ends, into Franklin?
I believe it goes all the way from Franklin to Park Street, but although I'm not sure down by Franklin, that was done relatively, you know, recently compared to the other, so I don't know, I'd have to check with Bob McGee on that. And also put it in the waterline. So, you know, there's been questions raised by residents, you know, whether or not we should be doing this, because it, it would seem to favor the subdivision. You know, I'm doing this because Lawrence Street has been deemed by some of the engineers that have inspected it, that it's, you know, it's a 1915-era bridge. While it's no immediate safety hazard, their recommendation is that the bridge, the bridge be replaced. So, that's why we've applied for, you know, three rounds of grants now, we've been turned down once, and now we have the Small Bridge Grant and the Mass Works Grants in play, one being for $500,000, and one being the Mass Works Grant for, as I said, $1.7 million, which has about $500,000 of developer contribution, including all the engineering for the bridge, as well as some of the other prep work for the waterline. So I don't know if you wanna...
We said we've already submitted it, right? I mean, it's been...
We've submitted it. I don't know if we'll, you know, we, I met with Representative for the Mass Works Program, they talked about, the timing is very interesting, as with a lot of the grant applications, so it sounds like they would prefer that the project already, just be tied into a project that's already approved. So I'm not sure the timing is actually gonna work out, I think, because the Mass Works Grant will be approved earlier in the fall than the, than both the approval and the appeal period go through for the zoning board process for Abbeyville.
Because they, because they wanna tie to it, like you said, to a development, so that would be their...
They want it tied to a development that's already approved.
They know it's going in, though, so, I mean, but what, what did he, what sentence did you get? Did you get a sentence?
I mean, you know, this is, I don't, they can't tell me yes or no, but that, the fact that they raised that as an issue makes me wonder that, that, you know, it's certainly something they're gonna look at, one of the factors.
Because of my, you know, because the project might not be, you know, approved, whatever, in whatever...
Might not be approved, or may not end up as the four units per acre that they require.
Right.
So they wanna have a...
Guarantee almost, yeah.
...seal...
I don't blame them, if that's, if that's their premise and the grant, but...
Okay. So, at some point, we're gonna have to go, you know, the Selectmen will enter into negotiations with the developer to talk about infrastructure improvements, and, you know, that would probably be, our preparation for that would probably be done in executive session. Obviously, the negotiations with the developer would not be done in an executive session, but would be done by a non-quorum group, and then eventually released in an open session by the Board of Slum. You know, the, my thought of the whole process would be that those negotiations would include, negotiations with the developer that included what happens with the grant and what happens without the grant. So, if the grant happens, it obviously, it's mutually beneficial. So his, his improvements, you know, including the work that would have to get done on Lawrence Street and the bridge, the waterline, if some of that is paid for the state, then we, then we ask for other types of...
Better maintenance.
Infrastructure improvements, which could be the well we've talked about. It sounds like, no matter what happens, the land for the well will be a donation to the town as part of the subdivision plan, so I think we'll, we'll get land for a well. But again, whether or not the grant happens, you know, we would look for the developer for, to do certain things if the grant is approved, and, and...
Certain things.
Certain things if the grant is not approved, you know, obviously, if the grant is not approved, then we put the burden of the bridge more on, on the back of the developer.
Okay. Good question, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, I, I have concerns over this, that you and I talked about. I mean, I know, I know the bridge needs to be replaced. I remember going down there with Bob McGee six years ago, and with you, looking at that bridge, and I know he's done some of the reframing of the foundation underneath that bridge, if that's the right terminology. What, what I'm more concerned about is that, that are we giving up some leverage in this? And I, I, I just, I personally feel that we're premature in the grant process, that we need to let this project play out a little bit, see where it goes, see how the ZBA deals with it. The grants are there every year, right? And I just, I don't wanna give up an opportunity to be able to leverage with the developer to get this development more in line with what we think we'd like to see, whatever that may be, and that's in the ZBA's hands. I mean, I have my own personal thing, but I'm sure everybody else does, too, so.
What do you...
Well, if, let's say we get the grant.
Yep.
All right, then that, that opportunity, that chip is off the table.
To say you have to fix the bridge at your own cost and improve your...
Well, it's just, it's a chip, it's, you know, I mean, everything you do with a 40B is a chip, and it's, it's, it's a game of negotiation. You can't stop the development, but you can negotiate the development. You do, this is, the one thing we can do is make those trades, to be sure that we get something that we can live with, and I'm just a little concerned that we're doing this prematurely, so. My, my opinion is we should hold off on the grant, and let the cards play out a little bit more.
Deadline was August 4th.
I know, but it could be rescinded.
Or can it not be accepted or forgiven, or do you wanna go...
We don't have to bid, we never have to bid out the project, I mean, that's...
It's just, it's just my opinion, I, I...
So why wouldn't we let...
This is early in the stage of negotiating with the class of law, and I just, I'm not arguing the fact that the, the bridge needs to be replaced, no disagreement, but that grant process is an annual process, and we might even have more leverage in being able to get the grant, if we get further down the line, in knowing where we are in terms of how this development plays out. But if that goes off the table for him as a consideration, I think that we use leverage in that regard. This is my opinion.
Well, again, we're sending it out, and as Jack said, we don't have to bid it out, so if we're lucky, you know...
But we could agree not to take it.
Exactly, so if you feel like, you know...
Which would be pretty strange.
I mean, if we feel like we're losing our leverage, like you said, we don't have to accept it, and then, like you said, it's just putting, your thought is, it's just putting the onus back on the developer, you know, as a hammer, like, you know, bottom line is, you have to make this palatable, I mean, fix the bridge to a tune of, close to $2 million bucks, you know, unless you give us X, Y, and Z in terms of concessions on your density, on your size, or whatever the ZBA is looking for, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, that, yes, I mean, it's, it's one way to look at it, but I just...
One of the biggest problems we've had with infrastructure improvements in town is getting the pre-engineering work done.
I know.
And you remember all the...
I talked about that.
All the work we had to do for the bridge that we ended up never getting, with the bridge over the MBT tracks.
And the Miller Street Bridge was forever.
Miller Street Bridge, so...
It was almost two and a half years.
You know, so, if we're gonna try and get a grant without, you know, partnership, then that means we have to put up, in this case, $125,000 to do the engineering. You know, we, we wasted, in the end wasted, I mean, it was, you know, at the time, we didn't know it, but we wasted $100,000 or so dollars, you know, on the bridge at Main Street. That was town's money, town, we borrowed the money, we spent it, we tried to, you know, we developed a, 20, that's only getting to 25% engineering.
And it didn't work.
It didn't work. So, in this case, we're, we're getting the engineering done.
It's already done, I guess I'm confused, it's, it's already been done and submitted, I mean, as a tight engineered project, I mean, as much, they're not gonna come back?
There's conceptual plans that have been submitted, the final plans won't be done until early October.
But is that after they accept or deny?
They're okay with the, the plans being submitted after the application.
What additional work needs to be done in order for the grant to be decided upon?
Nothing by our...
So there's no additional cost for the town, at this point in time, to either get or not get that grant?
No, we haven't spent any money on the grant yet, so, nor do we need to spend it.
So what's the downside in waiting?
What's the downside in waiting for next year's grant? It's always a, you know, one of the, one of the criteria when they're reviewing grants is, you know, they look at people who were rejected the year before. I mean, if you've got a, if you've got a project that's been on, the second year of submission, that factors into it.
But we've already tried, three times.
Not through the Mass Works, this is, this is two through the small, small bridge project. Small bridge project is one that you don't have to supply engineering ahead of time, so.
And all, or, Jack, I mean...
$500,000, we'll...
But you, we've sent in two grants, we're looking for the, the little guy and the big guy.
We've sent in a small bridge grant that's been rejected, now we've sent in a small bridge grant that's still being reviewed, as well as...
Which is potentially the $2 million grant.
No, the small bridge grant is $500,000.
Yeah, but, but that one, now you've gotten me confused, I thought we submitted two grants, small and large.
Yes, we've done, we've done two of the small, so we've done, last year we did a small bridge program, it was rejected. This year we've done a small bridge program for $500,000, and this year we've done a Mass Works project for...
So we have two grants?
Now we have two, we have two grants in play, yes.
But if you, if you would draw the submission, are the plans still valid a year later, or do we have to give them new, or just, is it not costly to update them, I mean?
No, it shouldn't be costly to update them.
But the small grant will, will handle the engineering components of what we may or may not need to do to the bridge. That's the intent of that, right?
Yeah, it'll, it'll cover more than, it'll cover the...
Cover more, but it'll certainly cover all of the costs associated with the necessary engineering to figure out what we have to do to that bridge.
Correct.
Right?
Yep, and the big one will cover the engineering and the cost of construction.
Potentially, unless, unless engineering comes up and says, it's a $3 million fix, well, I don't know why, it would be, or they're already...
Yeah.
But why, I, I, different from Jim's, why, you know, again, why pull it, again, we don't have to accept it, unless you think that's bad, if we don't accept it, we never can go back and bite the apple, I guess? I'm not really sure what the risk is.
Well, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with a, with a small grant, I mean, we need the engineering done, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm troubled with the fact that we're premature, in, with a large development going in there in an excessive amount of traffic that potentially could be going over that bridge, that we lose the ability to have that as part of how we negotiate this overall process, and give leverage to the ZBA in terms of how they, hopefully, get that project into a way that's acceptable to the community, whatever that might be. I, you know, I'm not defining that answer, but that's their job, but if, if we get the $2 million grant, then that becomes, that's off the table.
Not if we don't accept it, though.
Well, but if we do accept it, it's off the table.
Right, but we haven't, one, we haven't got there, and two, we haven't accepted it, and it sounds, again, I hate to be negative, but it sounds, the way Jack opinioned, since it's not a permitted project, I'm not sure why they would approve it. I mean, if, if they have a queue of approved projects that go together with this kind of stuff, I don't know what their backlog is, I don't know what they have.
A normal day without that development, we'd be all over this, no, no question.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, you know, I know Mike is here and is...
It's not a normal day.
Yeah, no, and I know Mike is here and has done a lot of analysis on trucking, and it's not, you know, my expertise. I'll tell you, the developer will present information, I think he will present information tomorrow, that will compare it to a project like the Village at River's Edge, in 2006 and '07, they moved that much soil in a 60-day period, and the, and the town, you know, survived. So, you know, and again, I'm not, not lobbying for, I'm just, you know, I'm telling you what he's gonna talk about tomorrow, that, that'll be a discussion.
I'm not arguing for or against.
Nor am I.
That's not my point, and I know you're not either. I'm arguing for, for the opportunity to have some chips in the game, some leverage. It's, to me, that's the only thing we can do, we're not a player in this project, unfortunately. But we are a player in the bridge, and, and that's, that's, I, I don't wanna take something out of the hands of the ZBA, that they might be able to leverage with the developer to be, make it, to make it whatever they deem a more appropriate project. That's my, that's my only point to this.
I'd rather hear from them in the ZBA, seeing if they're opposed to us, I haven't heard, I haven't spoken to any ZBA members.
I haven't either.
About what, so I don't, we're putting, not words in their mouth, but ideas in their head, whether they are for or against us pursuing a grant.
But if, if we get state money to fix the bridge...
Which we do not have to accept.
Well, but let's just assume we get the money and we fix the bridge. How, how is that not taking something away from the ZBA that gives them an opportunity to negotiate whatever it is they need to negotiate for this project?
Well, I think, I think if you take away the grant, you lose the ability to negotiate for something else. I mean, don't you want something, wouldn't you want him to...
What if he decides, because he has to, say he has to do the bridge at his own dime, he says, you know, I'm not gonna give you the well land, I want that, don't you? Again, see, I think we're speculating, I don't know...
I guess, you know, if, if this were a one-time application for the next 15 years, that's a different scenario, but it's not.
But if he's, but if he's gonna, you know, I don't know what the number is, I honestly just making up a numbers, let's just say he's got $100 that, that the developer is gonna contribute, that he, that's what he's gonna negotiate with, I'm gonna give the town $100 for infrastructure repairs. If I've gotta spend $50 on the bridge, then he's only got $50 left.
I understand.
But if the $50 is paid for by the state, and he still has $100 to give to us to work on other infrastructure, that supports the subdivision, and, you know, this is a question for the ZBA, is the, is the, is the subdivision gonna go in one way or another? Because I think there are ways to solve the bridge problem.
But there are two critical components to that development, one is water.
Yep.
Right, and the other's the bridge.
Yep.
Those are two critical components to that development.
Right, and I'd like to try and get some pieces of both from him, if we were...
Well, I'd like, I'd like to get it all.
Right, but you're just taking away some, you know, again, we're taking it out of the hands, I, again, I'm not comfortable, but I don't know what the ZBA wants to do, I mean, like you said, we have the chip, but...
Well, I'm, I'm not asking anybody to, you know, to rescind the, the, I, I just, I, I would like it to still be something we consider, as to whether or not we're taking the right approach with this.
Well, I'm totally, like you said, I'm not, I'm not even saying I'm gonna cash the check, like, you get a check sometimes, you return, return to sender, right?
I mean, Jack and I spent a lot of time talking about it, and, and he made some very good points, you know, they can go through Franklin just as easily as they can go down, go across Lawrence Street, I, I mean, I got it, I understand. But I do feel that, that a project of this size, maybe we, maybe we should have a, a meeting, maybe you should have a meeting, or, or if you want, his chair to meet with the Chair of the ZBA, and, and see, see what Mike feels, Mike, to his advantage.
Yeah, I don't wanna give away chips, don't get me wrong, I don't wanna give away their chips and their ability to control a project to the best interest of the town, right, you know?
That's, in simplistic terms, that's my concern, and if this, as I say, Jack, if it were a one-time grant, I'd view this differently, but it's not, it's an annual process, and you've made very good points, as to why it makes sense to do, I, I have very mixed views on it, but I just think it's worth a conversation with the Chair to see what they're looking, you know, where they're headed with this, and to see what they need and what they don't need, and how we can help and support that.
Okay. I can have that, yeah, Jack and I, Jack and you and I, then speak with Mike.
Sure.
Again, I haven't talked to him, I don't like to think, you know, I can't surmise what they wanna do, how they wanna do it.
I know the bridge needs to be replaced.
Somewhere, sometime down the, yeah.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, we walked it, I mean, we went underneath it, I'm, I'm not a bridge engineer by any means, but I think anyone would reasonably see when they get underneath that bridge.
Yeah, it's gonna need to be replaced, sooner or later.
1914, 1915?
15, I believe.
1915? It's, it's time, and I know that the state has, has said that it, it's one that needs to be replaced, so it's no question, and if it weren't for the development... And if it weren't for the development, we'd be all over this grant, trying to get it, to get that bridge fixed.
Yeah, but unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, the, the game, the game the state plays is they tie it into development.
That's understandable.
I know.
Jack, so I assume on bridges and inspections-
Maybe, you know, as you say that, Jack, maybe, I, I do think it merits a conversation with Mike, and, and see if there's a way that that can be tied together, see if there's some way that he can leverage that. That's all I'm asking, is let, let's see if, I just don't wanna throw a chip away, if it's not a meaningful chip, so be it, but if it is, I just don't wanna lose it.
That's true. Is it, you know, how the state inspects bridges, will it come to a point, you know, if, where the state sometimes mandates you, you must fix the bridge, you know, I, you know, whether we help you or not? I mean, it comes to a point where bridges fail, right, where they can condemn it or whatever, I mean, it's not that bad, I don't get, I don't want people to think it's that bad, but that comes up, if we just kept sitting on our hands, there was no development, and we just let it, you know, apply for the grants that we need, but if we never got anything?
Bob did a lot of work down underneath-
To shore it up, you mean?
Put a lot of concrete in there and shore it up that, so, I mean, it's not gonna fall down.
No, I'm not worried, again.
But over time, that bridge needs to be replaced.
So does every bridge in Massachusetts, I mean, eventually, you know, all, all bridges, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, City Mills one need, it's probably more, needs worked up.
Yes, it does.
We have folks out here, just comments, questions, I mean, anyone? If you need a microphone, make sure it's on green, Mike, if you're gonna speak, or you welcome up to the table if you want. I, it's just for home, it really is, 'cause it's hard, I, I, you watch meetings, it gets frustrating if you can't hear what people say in the-
Mike, come on up to one of these. Come on up to one of those.
Don't be shy.
I'm not shy.
Mike is not shy.
Yeah. Just identify yourself, you know, again, for people home.
Mike Judasey, Eagle Drive. Just a couple of quick points, and I appreciate the opportunity. You know, Jim, I wholeheartedly agree with you in terms of negotiation, this is all a negotiation, and that is a huge chip that the town has to hold over the developer. Just in terms of the bridge itself, and everyone agrees it needs to be replaced at some point. I did have a discussion with Bob McGee a couple of weeks ago, and as you indicated, he recently did some work to shore up the foundations. He indicated that he has some follow-up work to do on sort of the upper part of the bridge, uh, that's somewhere in the queue, I'm not sure how soon that would happen, or how that's being paid for, but it sounded like that was, uh, uh, in the near future, and he indicated, once that work is done, he's fairly confident, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but that's the impression I got, that the bridge would be good for another fifteen years or so. So, as, as you said, Scott, it's not like the bridge is gonna fall down.
No, I don't want people thinking at all, we have a bad bridge.
It's in decent shape. Jack, in terms of engineering, I agree, it's always great to get free engineering, I know I give enough to my clients, but, um, either way, the country, the developer has to design, has to do this design, so whether it's paid for by Mass Works grant money or his money, he still has to do the design.
No, I think we're agreeing, Jack's money just has less money to give us, if we could negotiate, he'll give us.
That's right, but in just in terms of getting the design done for free, if you will, you know, the design has to be done either way, regardless of where the money comes to pay for the construction.
Right, we just don't typically have the chance to apply for this size grant without, without engineering being done ahead of time.
And, you know, the last thing I, I do know about Mass Works grants, 'cause we have received a few for some of our clients as well, is they, they do require it to be, uh, ready for construction. So, the, if they award this, typically it's late fall, early winter, and we've had some come in December in the past, they expect you to start construction in the spring.
That's true.
So, I don't know if they're at that, if they're even gonna be at that point to be ready, in addition to it being an approved project, I think just in terms of getting the design done and all the permitting done, you know, I would question whether they, you know, even if they were ready today, started the design today, if they'd be ready for construction in the spring, which is a requirement of an acceptance of the Mass Works grant, so, just another issue to consider, but, um, you know, obviously, a lot of us feel like this development is, you know, way oversized for the site, and hopefully, as you indicated, the ZBA can, you know, make it more palatable development, both during construction and in the long run, once it's done, um, by going through this process. But I think taking this off the table is just gonna hinder their ability to get a better deal, if you will, for the town as a whole, so.
Okay.
My thoughts.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all your help.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So, um-
So, where are we?
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't, you know, unless, you know-
Nothing's gonna happen the next-
No, I, I don't.
Right, unless we were, you know, proactively go to state and rescind it, but I'm not in favor of that, but, um, 'cause again, I think, like, but I want, I'd rather have, at least not tonight, 'cause I'd rather have the discussion with Mike and the ZBA before, and then be able to report back to my colleagues, or, you know, what their thoughts were.
When does the state make a decision on this process?
Like Mike said, late, late fall, December, it's-
'Cause I, I think the worst-case scenario for us would be to be awarded the grant and to turn it down. It would be, I, maybe it's just human nature, but I think it would be very difficult to reapply.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't know that we'd get it again, you know, you're absolutely right, yeah.
So, I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna get in a position where we look that foolish.
I, I would agree, as far as trying to get the money in the future, yeah, I agree, I would agree, yeah.
So, I, I think that as long as we, I don't wanna close that door, 'cause you never know what's gonna happen, you don't ever wanna close a door. So, um, I would urge us to, you know, find out what the ZBA feels, and whether or not this is or is not something that can be advantageous to them. On the surface, to me, it appears like it should be, but I'm, you know, I will defer to them on this.
I could be just doing the small, I mean, again, I'm, I'm ready, I'm not, you know, it doesn't take me any time, whatever you conveniences for Mike and yourself and myself.
Mike's usually around.
Okay.
Okay.
What else you got, Jack?
I don't think-
No announcements about signs or anything that you wanna mention?
Well, about signs, yeah.
So, Jim had a note, you know, I mean, there's been a lot of-
I can talk to, you know, signs.
Public service announcement, I think.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things, I mean, um, we, we are moving forward with our housing production plan.
Nice.
Uh, we have another meeting set for, well, long month, I know, I'm still on the paper calendar. Why can't I find it? Uh, the fourteenth, September fourteenth, uh, I believe that that is hopefully gonna be at the middle school in the library. Um, and we hope that folks will attend that. Uh, we've made a lot of progress on that, there's been a lot of very enlightening information on, on the plan to date. Uh, we're still on schedule to have it submitted to the state in October and certified very shortly thereafter, so, uh, the final meeting will be, I, I think we have a joint meeting hopefully set between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, um, 'cause we have to vote them, vote the board.
Yep.
And their plan is to have the plan to all members of both boards a week prior, so they can review it, and then we'll have a discussion, and hopefully both boards will concur and vote it, so that we can get it submitted, and I think the plan is to do that at the twenty-sixth meeting of September. And then submit in October.
Have we touched in with the, uh, Planning Board, Jack, to let them know that's what we'd like to do, or have they been kept in the loop?
Uh, we should do that.
Okay, no.
Yeah.
I, I know they're in the loop, but we should reaffirm it.
'Cause I don't wanna catch a surprise, you know, I'd like to get as many members as, I know it's tough to ask them.
They're planning on having the, the plan to the board that week of the nineteenth, so they'll have a full week to review it. There'll be an opportunity for give and take, whatever they want, and then hopefully a joint meeting on the twenty-sixth to approve the housing production plan. And then she anticipates thirty days max to get certification, so we should be certified by the end of October. This consultant's batting average is a hundred percent, so.
Pretty good average.
That's the good news.
Even better than mucky bets.
But it's been enlightening, um, and I hope folks will take an opportunity to read it, and, and it's, I thought I knew Norfolk pretty well, and it's, I-
Hey, you don't know until you really talk to people, and then think, you know, unless it affects you personally, you don't know.
Where our, where our needs are, you know, what, what we're strong in and what we're not strong in, yeah, it's, it's been a good process. She's good, she's a good, done a good job. And then I just, I know you have, thank you for-
Yeah, that's my job.
The sign thing, I, I would just, I, um-
If I start, and then you can, you can fix it?
Sure.
Fix it. So, we, so we, we generally quarterly, uh, or at least multi, you know, two, three times a year, uh, go around and, and pick up signs that are in violation of either general bylaws or zoning bylaws. We typically pick up a whole lot of real estate signs, we pick up signs for carpenters and landscapers, and, and some political signs, uh, and, and where, what we're looking for are signs that aren't either permitted, you know, where, that are either permitted through the Board of Selectmen or through the Zoning Board of Appeals, or allowed by right under, uh, the general bylaws, which temporary signs are, in some cases are allowed. What, what the majority of the issues that came up in the last few days, or the end of last week, are signs that are in the right-of-way. And what people, a lot of people don't understand is, you know, if, if we have a twenty-four-foot road, um, that lies on a piece of property that is actually sixty feet wide, generally fifty to sixty feet wide, so we have anywhere between eighteen to, ten to eighteen feet on either side of the road that is actually owned by the town and called the right-of-way. Uh, our general bylaws prohibit signs from being in the, in the right-of-way. Those general bylaws are created by town meeting-
And the voters.
And the employees of the town are, are instructed to carry out, to enforce those zoning, those bylaws, general bylaws and zoning bylaws. So, we, you know, we, we, we believed we were acting in, uh, normal procedures and going around doing what we do every quarter, and, uh, picking up signs that were, uh, in conflict with those bylaws. As I mentioned, to some people, either on Facebook or on, uh, an email, um, not only do we do it quarterly, but we do it, um, when there tends to be a, uh, when we start hearing more from people that the, you know, the, the volume of signs out there is getting, um, annoying. From, you know, that's not always the word, but it's, but it's become a problem for people, uh, site nuisance. So, anyway, the, the signs we went around and picked up today, the other day, a lot of them had to do with one particular topic. That wasn't the focus of the, the pickup, we picked up, you know, as I said, landscaper signs, we picked up, um, real estate signs, et cetera, that, that didn't, that weren't in compliance. Um, and we bring them back here, and if people want them back, they're welcome to come and back and get them. I think a lot of them have been picked up, um, in this case, um, and they need to just make sure that they're out of the right-of-way, which if they assume it's a ten-foot, ten-feet, um, they're, they're probably pretty safe. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go out and tape measure on every street, um, everyone is, everyone is different, it all depends on the width of the road, depends on how much land the town had whenever the road was created. And it depends on whether the road is in the middle of that piece of property or not, so, we generally just assume that it's a ten-foot. If the, if the sign is ten feet off the road, then you'll be safe. So, if it's a political sign, like a lot of these were, then if you're ten feet off the road, you'll be fine.
And people are that, sorry, a question about can we give notice, I mean, it's, you know, the ideal if we could, but it's impractical, given that we have one zoning enforcement officer, and maybe an assistant, to, you know, to, to go out, give notice, and then come back forty-eight hours later and check, I mean, that'd be the ideal world, and again, we, I apologize, we apologize, you know, for people's angst and being upset about that, but it's just, you know, limited staff we have here at Town Hall, I mean, to go out and-
Well, Jim had a good idea, and I think that a couple of people, we've been working on this for a couple of days, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, I, I know that it's a process we normally take. What, a couple of things I would suggest is, one, that we didn't know about it. And I, you know, not that we need to know about everything, but when you're removing signs that are around a specific issue, it's logical to think that we're gonna get phone calls and emails, and, and you have answered, thank you, as Chair, a number of those comments very well. So, I, I would just ask that, that when we know there is an issue associated with this, that we be informed ahead of time.
Yep.
That this is the time we're gonna go around and, and enforce this, and that maybe we take the opportunity to think through the right way to approach it when there's something unusual. I mean, it's, if it's just normal, you know, painters and landscapers and excavator signs, that's, that's one thing, but when there is an issue that's sensitive to people, we ought to think through that ahead of time, and, um, you know, whether, and, and I don't know what the right answer is, Scott, but, but what happens when you have a lot of signs associated with one particular issue is people misinterpret the removal.
Right.
You know, and, and they start having, you know, they start to try and rationalize incorrectly why those signs were removed, and, and if there's a way we can prevent that at the front end, and one thought I had, I mentioned to Jack today, is maybe we can have some type of notification that can be taped to the side of the, we can't put it in the mailbox, but we can tape it to the side of the mailbox, saying-
Or on the sign, 'cause Jeff, Jeff, Jeff Polo had a great idea, a staple, will be removed, if not moved back.
And I know a number of the signs were clearly on town property, there's one on, there was one on Nagatake and Fruit Street that was literally almost in the street. I mean, you know, I, I know a number of them were in violation, so I'm not challenging the right to remove them, but because of the sensitivity of it when there is an issue like that, I, I think knowing in advance and thinking through the right way to deal with it, would, rather than creating this chaos and misinterpretation of why it happened.
Fair, no problem.
Just point in the future.
I'm certainly, I'm certainly all for it, given the, I don't wanna repeat those two days.
No, nobody does, and, and there was no intent.
No, I understand why people are upset, too, but like I said, I'd rather not, like, I know what we're trying to do, too, as Jack, as Jack's told me many times, it's, it's a hard process. Ideally, you know, we don't want sign proliferation, it would be nice if people police themselves and-
I mean, I, I didn't even know we went around, to be honest with you, every quarter and picked these up, I, I didn't know that.
There's a few frequent offenders that we pick up a lot of.
But there are-
Car guy.
There are sensitive issues in the community now, and, and people are voicing their opinion with those signs, and, and they have a right to do that, and I, I just think we should need to be sensitive to it.
And the orange bike, I know Jack's all over the orange bike.
I got the orange bike, I got a new orange bike.
Mr. Hathaway is taking care of that orange bike, thank you, Jack, yeah.
So, we can do that?
Absolutely.
Super, thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Can't think of anything else.
Oh, Mary has a scheduling question.
Yes.
September.
Thank you, guys. October, the one that Jeff and Jim are, I think Jeff and Jim are on.
Well, well, Jim said I'm out that week.
I'm out there.
I think Jeff is too, though.
And you said, "Well, let's pick another day this week."
I think Jeff is-
No, Jeff, then he says he's out that week, too, I think that's just a bad week, Mary, I'm flexible, so let these two guys come back, too, if they could.
That's the only week I have a problem.
Do you wanna do the next week, or do you-
See, I kinda be, doesn't that push it to Halloween, though? I don't wanna wear a costume.
I'd just like to avoid Halloween.
Well, it's the thirty, it literally is the thirty-first, right, 'cause it gets dark.
Yeah, I'd rather not do it on Halloween, just-
How about the thirtieth?
Not that my kids do it anymore.
I'm fine with Monday to Thursday, I just like to hear from Jeff. That's fine, I mean, we haven't done it Monday, if the, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so it'll be October tenth and October thirtieth.
Just, Jeff, if you're listening, when you watch this later on tonight, let me know if the thirtieth is good. No, he does watch it.
Ted, you wanna?
He won't be watching it tonight.
I believe Bob, well, I was gonna make a presentation tonight, he actually stopped talking to us in the area.
Um, I, I know he did an inspection, I think, I, he and I had a discussion, I don't think he was gonna make a presentation tonight, so.
'Cause not the agenda of Mr. Hart, so you really, he could, I don't know what his nature of-
So, it was just an informal discussion, would you?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry to keep you-
Sorry.
No, you can-
No, that's fine. All right, thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Anything else, Mary, thank you on the scheduling, so tenth and thirtieth, uh, Jack, anything else?
No, as Ted said, Bob went out to that site today, and I don't know the results yet, but I, I, there were some, people raised some questions about Bob was gonna go meet with Mr. Hart.
And what about the, we had, we received some emails, too, about running gun, right, that were, uh-
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, there was one issue that, um, I know, I knew about, I had, well, I knew about as of Monday, um, the fact that they went over to six fifteen. I know that they had a, uh, 'cause Mr. Brogan came and saw me Monday morning and told me that they went over six by fifteen minutes, um, they had a, uh, one of their participants, uh, got thrown from the horse, sorry, I'm not a horse guy, so I gotta think of the right terminology, got thrown from the horse.
Fell off.
And so they had, they had stopped the, um, and this was kinda, you know, mid to late in the, in the day, he said, and, uh, so they stopped activity for about half an hour, just to, the, there was, they didn't need medical assistance, but the woman was shaken, and, you know, it was a young rider, uh, shaken, and, and, you know, I'm assuming had the wind knocked out of her, or whatever happens when you get thrown, I know I would be dead if I fell from horse, but, um, but she ended up participating later in the day, so it was, uh, so they, they were running behind schedule for that, and then, and to start the day, they had some extra work to do to prepare the grounds because, uh, of all the rain the night before, so they were, and, so he said, for safety reasons, in both cases, you know, we were running behind schedule, um, they needed to com- complete the events, um, you know, it's a, it's a series of eliminations, I guess, at the end. They have a finals, and, and that's all, I know, and I'm not sure exactly how that works, but, uh, they needed to complete, so he, he thought that, you know, he, he was being reasonable based, you know, based on the two events that happened, that, uh, for safety reasons, he was, uh, he was okay, so. Um, I think he'd be happy to come talk to us about it if you, if you would like, but, uh, he gave me that heads up, and then we did receive a complaint about that. The other complaint we received about was an event that happened on Sunday. I haven't, uh, really explored that one yet. My understanding, uh, in a quick conversation with Mike, was that, uh, they didn't charge an event fee or have an admission fee. I believe he charged a, a fee to have the event there from the association. I think the literature may say that, uh, an admis- an entrance fee was charged.